All the meaning of the Hammond Common Council order for Monday, August 23rd. All rise.
Eternal God and Father, Lord God, we come again saying thank you, Lord God. Lord God, we thank you for this day that you have made. Lord, we thank you for our children that have now come back to school, Lord God. Continue to cover them and keep them. Continue to cover every teacher and every person that comes in contact with them. Continue to cover our residents in this city, Lord God, this great city. We thank you for all your doing. Cover our ambulances, our fire, and our police. In Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you. Mark Galick, welcome.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spatelli.
Here.
Vines.
Here.
Kowinski.
Here.
Torres.
Here.
Tyler. Emerson.
Here.
Raichos.
Here.
Warple.
Here. Let the record show, all nine members are present, eight in chambers, one by Zoom. Mayor?
Hi, everybody, thank you.
How you doing?
I'm good, Mr. Council President. Thank you for letting me speak. All right, I had a couple of topics to cover. Sorry I missed last month, I sent Phil in my place. I had a family vacation, actually, so got away to Michigan with my wife and my family. So, I'm back on the job, wanted to talk about a few issues. I know that, right now, you have first and second reading for a possible, and I want to say possible, loan from HUD, something called the Section 108, 108, right? Section 108 loan that would help us do something that we're talking about. Department head for Community Affairs, Juana Miller, wanted to get this process moving in case we needed it. Okay? So, I'm going to talk a little bit about what we're working on, and explain the rationale behind it, and then, if things come together and we can reach some type of agreement, Section 108 loan may need to be used. It's a loan that gets repaid with CDBG money from the federal government. We used it on the original Sportsplex. We still have some capacity left there. So, the idea is, you know, right now, first off, Councilman Tyler, Councilman Kowinski, and myself have been talking about this, about this proposal, all right? I met with Councilman Tyler and Councilman Kowinski last week about a couple of different projects worked into the same project, a few different projects. One of them would be finishing Martin Luther King Park. It's not finished yet, there was one phase left, that includes a lot of renovations in and around Tapper. That would be finished under this proposal. Another proposal we were talking about was Plasky Park Pool. As everybody knows, our original park bond that we floated years ago, Plasky Park Pool was part of that proposal. There was a difference of opinion, that project didn't get completed, and instead, we completed projects in Irving Park, Edison Park, Hessville Park, which park am I missing? MLK Park. And we used the proceeds from the bond at that time to do those projects. In limbo was the Plasky Park Pool. I'm trying to be accurate, and I'm not trying to point elbows or anything. I think it's fair to say that, we've always talked about that project, we just didn't have a plan forward. Councilman Mark, if you disagree with me, please indicate. We're talking about finishing this proposal, and it would be under this park plan. We're going through, working with Councilman Mark right now on this proposal. So, that's the second part, and the third part is a good problem to have, is the Sportsplex. Hammond Sportsplex is extremely busy, it's making money, and when we look at it like a business, which is what I like to do, I look at it, it's like three businesses in one, well, really four businesses if you count the bar and the concession stand, which makes a lot of money. But you have basketball, you have volleyball, you have soccer, and then you have, you know, like the concessions, the bar upstairs, and the concession stands downstairs. When I tell you they make lots of money, we're talking hundreds of thousands of dollars is the type of miscellaneous revenue that Sportsplex is creating, and which is great, and it's busy. This is actually the time of year it's not very busy, but 11 out of the 12 months, it's extremely busy. When you look at where we're making our money, besides concessions, you look at volleyball and basketball are literally printing money. The demand exceeds the space we have by a long shot. So, we're forced, and then you look at soccer, which is really, really far behind as far as how much money it makes. I mean, I don't want to quote our numbers off the top of my head, but it's not even close. Basketball and volleyball are just extremely successful, and it's not that soccer is not extremely successful, it's just not as much money in soccer as there is in the other two sports. So, being a capitalist and an opportunistic mayor and trying to do what's right for the city, we started talking about, is it worth having soccer? It's that much further down, that where, if we moved volleyball out of the basketball side and moved it into the soccer side and like gutted soccer, and just said, okay, we'll let you go play indoor soccer at other facilities, we're going to convert the soccer side of the Sportsplex to a volleyball court. We started talking amongst ourselves in the administration, talked to Councilman Torres, talked to people I respect in the community, and felt that that would be looked at as insensitive to our population. That even though soccer's not making tons of money like basketball and volleyball are, that if we did something like that, it may not be perceived well by a significant part of our population. So, it's worth it, basically. It's not making money like volleyball and basketball, but it's worth it because it's important to the community, it is used, my kids used it, my kids don't anymore, but... So, it leaves us with a weird choice on the other side. We have literally half the capacity for two lucrative sports. So, we started talking about, we do have room for expansion, we've always left room for expansion. If we did one section just dedicated to volleyball, is it worth it? How much would it cost? How much could we expect? And the good thing is, an expansion like that wouldn't involve an expansion of workers at all. We have the workers to cover a new expansion like that, and if we did something like that, and I keep using words like if and possible, because this is not in cement at all, it's being talked about. If we did something like that, how much extra money would we make? We'd literally be able to run simultaneous sports at the same time, we could run all three sports at the same time. So, the idea was combining a few different projects into one big project, and then financing it without debt. And I have a way to do it, involves Section 108. It's not just Section 108. It involves a lot of different sources, and I wasn't really prepared to come to the council and talk about this, but with the Section 108 loan on the agenda, we had no choice but full disclosure, which is what I'm doing right now. I would hope that we wouldn't have this conversation, because it's not done, but we're talking about it. So, I don't know if you have any questions on that, I have a couple of other things I want to talk about, but I didn't know if you wanted to talk about this. I mean, we're not even close to the finish line on it, and I just want to point that out.
Councilman Torres.
Have you thought about exercise room, workout room as part of this expansion?
Councilman Torres, keep in mind, and you and I talked about this before, the Sportsplex, I could tell you one thing for sure, is the YMCA is going to be right next door to it. And that even impacts this plan because of the pool that Councilman Kowinski is seeking for Plasky Park. The YMCA pool is going to be like a resort pool, like it's going to be bigger than a resort pool. So, I don't think we're going to be able to compete well with a $45 million facility right next door if we had a gym in the new Sportsplex, because why would you go to the Sportsplex when you have a brand-new Y with all the latest equipment right next door? And that even impacted what we were talking about with Plasky Pool, because if we build a pool, you know, I don't even want to get into the situation where we're trying to compete with the new YMCA, because I don't think we can compete with it.
Okay, another question about the soccer. You know, I'm surprised to hear that it's not competing with the other volleyball. Out of the three you mentioned, I thought volleyball would be the least making money, and you say it's making money comparable to basketball. Is there a problem with soccer, people, or lost interest, or what?
Councilman Torres, I don't thi...I think it's just about the season. The soccer season is this time of year, they're playing soccer outdoors, they're not in the Sportsplex. And keep in mind, a lot of the money that basketball and volleyball drive is through concessions as well, you know, and through like traveling teams and stuff like that. We have that kind of stuff, but it's outside of the Sportsplex. So, the only time we really get soccer money is during the winter when they're locked up, and a big part of the season, they hit the road.
I thought you were talking about the whole year.
I'm talking, just if you looked at it from...
Summer months, then.
Just at the Sportsplex, how much do we get from each sport? Soccer is the lowest, but for reasons I indicated earlier, it's good business for us to have soccer in the Sportsplex as is. It's beautiful. It wasn't about whether or not it's gorgeous, whether or not it's succeeding, it's just, it's not making as much money as the other side, not even close, and that's all, that's why we even looked at that issue. I appreciate your points, though.
Mr. President?
Councilman Emerson.
I would just add that soccer is played outdoors, I agree with you, Mayor, and it's played at Irving and Edison in the fourth, and when it gets cold, they play out there until it's like 32 degrees, but it's free.
And then, when it gets too cold, they come to the Sportsplex, and then they start counting for the numbers I'm giving to you all. We don't get the numbers when they're playing in Edison Park, right?
Right.
They're not buying Gatorade from us at Edison Park, they're buying it from the local, you know, White Han, or...So, anyway, thank you, Councilman. This is still very much in limbo, you know, I didn't really want to talk about this tonight. I understand why you want to talk about it, though, which is why I'm talking about it now. I'm still working details out, but the whole goal of this is to do it without debt. Section 108, I guess you can count that as debt, but realistically, it's paid for by the federal government, doesn't affect our budgets, the gaming budget, nothing like capital improvement, doesn't affect anything if we get that, so...Anyway, if you mind, if I move on to two other issues before I pass back, if that's all right, Mr. President?
Yeah, it's fine. Is there no more questions on that issue?
On, what's that?
There was no more questions by anybody on that issue for you?
There will be more on this topic. Oh, Councilman?
Yeah, I just have one question, well, actually, two quick questions, Mayor. I know in our last meeting we talked about this, you discussed how much more revenue you would anticipate us bringing in. I don't know if you're ready to call that number, but if you have a ballpark, could you share that? And then my other question is, given that we would be using CDBG or HUD dollars, is there any guidelines or regulations we have to apply or any programs to that avenue to make sure that families with low income background will be able to utilize the Sportsplex and take advantage of the programs there?
Thank you, Councilman. First question, there are numbers, I can't give them to you off the top of my head. I know Kim was, the Sportsplex director was at caucus, and she was giving you numbers, you probably have better numbers than I do off the top of my head. I'm not trying to skirt, but I would have to guess, and it's a big number, though, Barry. Secondly, as far as 108 loan, yes, we would have certain parameters, you know, as far as low to moderate income personnel, and I don't think that's much of a problem with the Sportsplex, because we do service a lot of low to moderate income families, and we do community-oriented events, which is also another prerequisite, but yeah, there would be stipulations with that money, for sure, Councilman Barry.
Are there any further que...are there any further questions for the Mayor on this issue?
Okay, I'm going to move forward, Councilman, Council President, to 2015 A bond refinancing, which is going up for first and second reading. This is a bond that we floated six years ago. As everybody knows, the interest rates are at historic lows right now. This bond in particular, we're paying around 6% annual interest rate, whereas Megan has done a lot of research on bonds that we could use to refinance its debt instrument, and we could get a rate that's literally half of what we're currently paying. If we did refinance it as we're proposing in this, so our interest rates drop from 6 to close to 3%, our annual payment will drop to around $3 million, which would save us a couple million dollars a year, and we will save 2.7 million over the life of the bond. We are going to extend, under this proposal, we would extend this bond out five more years at low interest rates, full disclosure, but over the life of the bond, we'll save 2.7 million dollars a year. Right now, this bond is being paid for by the Water Department, so this doesn't even affect your budget, but it is an opportunity to take advantage of historically low interest rates. I think safely saying, looking around this room, nobody in this room was alive when interest rates were as low as they are right now, and I have a feeling, we may never get an opportunity like this again. So, Megan's done a good job of looking at our debt instruments and trying to save us money, and I appreciate her bringing this forward. So, obviously, this is up for first and second reading, I just wanted to put it on your radar, I'll be talking about it the next time I give you a report as well. And last but not least, I know there's been some concerns across the street with the demolition of Hammond High School. I sent you all a letter from HDEM, I was called this morning by Councilman Barry, I appreciate him asking me to look into this, so we got to work, I got to work, but I was very happy when I talked to HDEM, Hammond Department of Environmental Management, and they were full aware of this situation. They've been monitoring this situation, they sent me a letter that I forwarded to the council at large, and I also forwarded to Councilman Barry, as well as the council president. I should have just given it to all nine of you, but I was just trying to do it to the people this really affected. I apologize if I offended anybody by not giving them the letter, you can get it from Councilman Dave. But, Skillman met with Hammond Department of Environmental Management prior to the demolition starting, and they are full aware that we have total access to their job site by just sitting at our desk. We're literally on the third floor, you get a great view of this, and if you go up to the roof, you can see the entire demolition project. I mean, we could sit there and watch it. Skillman has no idea if we're watching, or whether or not, I would like to point that out. HDEM officials have regularly inspected the demolition process without Skillman even being made aware that we are watching them work. This is what we have found so far from our direct observations. Demolition started on June 21st, 2021, of the old Hammond High School. In the early days of this process, HDEM noticed dust being created when dump trucks were being loaded with demolition debris. Because we were concerned that this dust may carry possible contaminants, and it could possibly get into our neighborhoods, HDEM and the City Hammond decided to notify IDEM, the Indiana Department of Environmental Management, of our findings of the dust situation over the summer. The next day, two IDEM inspectors advised Skillman to water down the demolition debris before loading any, before any loading operation takes place. Skillman 100% complied with IDEM's request. In fact, Skillman went even further, and this is coming from HDEM, and they're pretty tough on people that are violating laws. HDEM said, "Skillman went even further than they were requested to by IDEM, they are using a fan-powered water cannon to hold down the dust on the site, and it's very effective." Keep in mind, the prevailing winds this time of year are generally from west to east, maybe a little bit from the south to the north, west to east, but any debris that's going to leave the old Hammond High Site is going to go towards Calumet Avenue nine times out of 10 this time of year. HDEM has noticed a dust-like substance leaving the demolition site, and then upon further investigation, they found that it's not dust, it's in fact spray from the water cannons that leaves this site. I've given, I've given each councilperson a copy of the memo that was given to me by, today by HDEM, and I said earlier, they've been monitoring this situation since day one. Councilman Barry, I appreciate you for bringing this to my attention, but I was very happy when I found out how involved in this process HDEM has been from the beginning. And that's my report, I don't know if you all have any questions of me.
Does anybody have any questions for the Mayor? Councilman Kowinski?
He said that currently, the bond is paid by the Water Department. After this ordinance, if we pass it, it will still be paid by the Water Department.
Yes, sir. I'll repeat, the Water Department currently pays for that bond, and after this, the Water Department will still pay for that bond. It's coming over? I'm sorry, that's, we will be paying this, that's part of the process. Yeah.
Coming out of the general.
Yeah.
So, it's being paid out of the general fund currently, but it's backed by the Illinois Water contract, so essentially, it's on our books, but it's the money that Water Department collects and gives to us that pays the issuance off. Yep.
Thank you. And that will continue, then?
Yes.
So, Water Department pays it, it's on our books, but Water Department pays it?
Essentially.
Water revenue that comes to us pays it.
Okay.
Right. Backed by gaming, so if anything went wrong. This is, when this was floated at first, this was when our contracts with Illinois Communities were relatively new. Councilman?
Mr. President?
Councilman Emerson.
Yeah, I addressed this in caucus, and Megan answered. The gaming, I don't know what Councilman Kowinski is referring to, but the gaming, the gaming is mentioned in the ordinance, and it is always mentioned as a backup, as I understand it, so...
Pretty much, unfortunately, when we float bonds, and it's assuming worst-case scenario, that the creditors could grab gaming if we couldn't pay it out of, in this case, water revenue.
Right.
Okay? Gaming's almost always a backup. Sometimes they make you put money aside, but lately, we haven't had that issue, so...
Are there any further questions from the Mayor on any topic?
Mr. President?
Councilman Tyler?
Uh, Mayor, just going back to that, the Hammond High issue.
Mm-hmm.
I guess my question is, I know that, you know, HDEM has been monitoring the situation, but I think what, some of the complaints that we're getting, or some of the concerns are that, like, some of the materials that might be blowing away, or might be in the ground, might be in groundwater, could be hazardous to residents, and so, I know what you and I talked about was us possibly doing our own independent study of some random samples, testing those samples and seeing what chemical makeup or what material we found. Is that still a possibility? Because I think that would put a lot of the residents' fears to light, it will kind of subside any doubts or concerns that they have with the process so far.
I brought this up to HDEM, and they thought it was sort of ridiculously overbroad, being honest with you, Councilmen. They felt that they've been monitoring this situation from day one. I'm not saying that, no, but part of our job is to communicate to the public that when we're doing things the right way, like, you know, but if the council and if Councilman Barry feels that we should go out there and test, and it makes people feel better, I have no doubt that we could do that, you know, we've done it before, it's just, I was very happy when I heard how closely involved in this demolition project that HDEM has been, that HDEM has been, and if we need to go further to make people feel right, but I've heard, you know, I like to consider myself pretty much in touch with the community, and I heard about this the first time this morning. And this isn't the first demolition project that's happened under my watch, and it won't be the last demolition project that happens under my watch, but this is unique as far as the concerns that are being expressed, and HDEM has given me the impression, and usually when I get complaints about HDEM, it's that they're too tough, and in this case, HDEM has been telling me, Mayor, they've done it by the book. In fact, they're doing it above and beyond the book with the spray system that they put together, so if it really is an issue, and it really, and if I'm getting overwhelming response from the community, I guess that if that makes people feel better, Councilman Barry, I'm just trying to be honest, I mean, if we're really insisting to do this, I'll send my people out there and we'll do it, but they feel, and these are experts, I'm not, but they feel it's not necessary, so, and I'm just being as honest as possible, Councilman Barry.
No, and I can't, I can't understand that, I think from my perspective, you know, the building is over 100 years old, so I think, you know, nobody really knows what was in there. I mean, maybe the demo company does some of the testing, but at the same time, I would just rather be safe than sorry, and if it takes a little bit of effort for us to be able to go to task and put those concerns to bed, and really show the public that, you know, we care about their well-being, and we're doing our due diligence, too. And I understand from Asian perspective, like they, like you said, they've been watching this, they've monitored it, but I think it's another step of actually going out there testing this to make sure that everything is on the up and up, and just showing the residents that they do not have to be worried about for the rest of the process, so if we could do that, I don't know how, I guess I could make a motion to maybe move forward with that and see what the council thinks.
I feel like we're sort of shadow boxing. I heard about this this morning for the first time, and, you know, I just feel like we're sort of shadow boxing, you know, and Scott Miller, who, the superintendent of schools, has a great relationship with the administration, I've heard nothing from them, I've heard that they've had independent testing, it came out clean, HDEM says everything's gone by the book, in fact, if anything, it's above and beyond the call, and now if we're going to take the next step and start testing everything, I guess we could, that's no problem, we have employees that could do this, it's just, they're telling me it's totally unnecessary, and if the council feels differently. I'm not an expert in this, I'm just telling you what I've been told. And usually, when people complain about HDEM, it's because they're too tough, for the record. I heard it a thousand times, and in this case, I'm being told, HDEM's not tough enough. If that's going to make people feel bad, first off, I haven't had any complaints by anybody from the public, other than the Councilman, who represents thousands of people, so when the Councilman calls me, it's serious, but that was the first I heard about it, this morning. I've heard nothing from the schools, I've heard nothing but everything's clean, everything's by the book, that's all I've heard, so if we're going to go testing, I'd like to get a better scope of what we're looking for, if we're just testing for anything, or what's in the system that's, you know, causing harm? I'm asking questions, because I don't know the answer to it. So, if we're going to test, we've got to know what we're looking for. You know, when the swans were dying, and it was on the front page of the paper, and the local radio station was saying that Wolf Lake was contaminated, I knew what I was looking for. In this case, I heard from Councilman Barry, and I really don't know what we're testing for, so I think we've got to dig down a little deeper if we're going to do this, personally. I'm not, I'm not trying to be disrespectful at all.
Yeah, no, I can tell you that from the report that was shared with me last week, there were trace elements of asbestos and barium found in some of the samples, I'm not sure if they were the groundwater samples or in the soil samples, and so, we know that asbestos was definitely present in that building, so just wanted to make sure that everything was removed from that building before they exercised the demolition. So, I think those two at least would be two starting points.
I've had number...
Anything else identified?
I've demolished old schools since I've been Mayor, the old Riley School in Schleicher, and we spent a whole process just doing an abatement, which we called it, was removing the asbestos. We didn't just go in there and swing a sledgehammer and knock down walls, we abated it, took all of the asbestos out, and then we demolished it. I would be shocked, absolutely stunned if the school city didn't do something similar, I'd be, I think that would be illegal, actually. So, that's all I'm saying, Councilman Barry, is if we're going to do this, let's dig down a little deeper. I haven't seen the report you're talking about, I don't want to send an army of HDEM inspectors out there tomorrow inspecting, and we don't know what we're looking for, that's all I'm saying, okay? And I'd love to see that report. I'd love to see that report, if you can get it to me, too, Councilman, and I'd like to ask the superintendent of schools about it, because he hasn't said anything to me about this. And I'm across the street...
Just for the record, I'm not, just for the record, I'm not stating that the school city had any demolition company or community, whoever did do what they were supposed to, I just wanted to make sure that it was done, so that our residents are not at risk.
Thank you, Councilman.
Is there any further questions for the Mayor on anything?
Mr. President?
Councilwoman Alexander?
I totally agree with Councilman Tyler, just same thing, I mean, we've gotten calls, so, just to cure the residents of how they're feeling, if we can just look a little bit further.
For what?
For whatever we need to look for. We can give you some more information, and we'll, you know, go forward, go forward with that, but I just, just to make sure that everybody is safe and there's nothing...
Believe me, I work here, too. I work right across the street, if we're breathing bad air, I got my windows open right now, so I'm interested if there's something wrong, I trust you, trust me, Councilwoman.
I understand, but I'm just saying, if we can just show them that we are actually, we do care, that's the biggest thing with the residents, is showing that we actually do care about what's going on.
We do care, we do care, but I don't want to shadow box either. There's a lot of people that live in Hammond, 81,000, and there's some people that think Donald Trump won the last presidential election, you know? I can't solve all the problems in our city if people, you know, if there's something going on at Hammond High School right now, I want to know about it, and this is, I heard about it this morning for the first time. This report you're talking about, haven't seen it, haven't heard anything from the administration. So, if I'm going to send an army of my inspectors out there tomorrow, I want to know what I'm looking for, and if it's a rational basis for it, you know, being like that, Councilwoman, that's all I'm saying, okay? And when we had a problem in Robertsdale, it was widely publicized, and it was scaring the crap out of people, and if this is a similar situation, we'll react similarly, I promise, okay?
Thank you.
And if you can give me the details, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Councilman Kowinski?
Mayor, do you have any new information on the process for the remediation in Robertsdale?
Thank you, yes, sir. We sent a letter out, thank you, Councilman Mark. We have a situation in Robertsdale with lead. Here we are, talking about environmental issues, this decades-long problem, and Robertsdale, literally probably since the 1920s, 30s, 40s, and 50s, the former Hammond lead would belch out, smoke into the air, the smoke was filled with lead, and the prevailing northerly, you know, westerly winds would take that cloud, and it was heavy, because it's lead, and it would rain lead in Robertsdale and mostly whitey for decades. So, we didn't have the capacity to go out and test for lead in the ground like we do now, and when the EPA, obviously with the situation in East Chicago, and the horrible situation that they were dealing with involving lead, EPA got aggressive and started testing white areas of northwest Indiana, and found that in that neighborhood, we had lead levels that were elevated, not anywhere near what East Chicago was, but elevated to the point where the federal government felt we needed to take action. What this means is, if the federal government takes action on a property like this, it's superfund. We would literally, to fix this problem, the way that the feds wanted us to fix it,[1717.16] we would have to declare a superfund site in that section of Robertsdale. I didn't really feel like that was good for business. So declaring a superfund site, you could own a house in that neighborhood and suddenly you own a house in a superfund site and you watch the value of your house drop thousands of dollars. So we start monetizing. It's literally, Councilman Mark, hundreds, like 150 properties in that ballpark that we're talking about with elevated level levels where we would actually come in and try to fix our problem for them. So we started looking at, can the city Hammond, instead of filing superfund, can we take this responsibility upon ourselves and do what the EPA did to numerous properties in Whiting in that section of our city already and sort of circumvent the superfund process? Where we clean out your front yard, if you're one of the houses, we get HDM out there to shoot your yard when it's done and then we certify, HDM certifies that your yard is clean. And it helps you sell your house then, right? People said, didn't you have lead in your yard? And you said, yeah, HDM certified it's clean. They changed everything out and you're like, okay, I'll buy your house now. It's literally millions of dollars, like when I say that, four million-ish in that ballpark, if we take this process unto ourself, or we could wait 10 years, declare a superfund and have a superfund site in Robertsdale section of Hammond. So we're doing this in phases, Councilman Mark, and we sent out a letter to 14 houses in your district, 14 property owners, and asked them if they wanted to voluntarily participate in this project. And if they do, we wanted to go through and help them. We have a firm out of Indianapolis that does this type of stuff and we've been working with HDM, US EPA, and we're hoping that this is successful, Councilman Mark.
And they don't want to participate?
They don't have to. It's up to them. I would do it if I was, the city Hammond's offering to clean your problem up for you. If you don't want government on your property, you have that right to say no. But when somebody wants to buy your property 10 years from now, you got a problem, right? So I'll let you know as that develops. We sent a letter out about a week ago. So I know a number of, of property owners have already contacted us on that. Thank you for bringing that up.
Was that all you had? Does anybody else have any question for the mayor?
Sorry to take so much time. We're, we're busy. Thank you very much, Mr. President and to the rest of the council, I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Item number four, approval of minutes.
President.
Councilman Spitali.
Accept the minutes from August 9th, 2021, placed on file, please.
Second.
Motion's been made to accept the minutes and placed on file by Councilman Spitali, seconded by Councilman Emerson. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Hearing none, Clerk Golick, roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kelwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakels.
Yes.
Warpo.
Yes. Let the record show, the minutes are approved, nine in favor, zero opposed. Item number six.
Five.
Five. Didn't got my glasses on again. Approval of claims.
Mr. President.
Councilman Rakos.
I move to play, hey, claims, beginning with claims dated at 8/10/2021 and ending with claims dated 8/18/2021. Claim number 3926 through claim 4182, an amount of $5,597,360.32.
Second.
Motion's been made to accept the claims as written by Councilman Rakos, seconded by Councilman, Councilwoman Vines. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kowinski.
Thanks. I had a question about claim 4001 and 4002, mental health of America redevelopment. I just wondered what that was for. Is that for space or is that for services or, I'm just not sure. I'm sorry I didn't get to you before this.
Dave, do you want, do you know?
I don't know, I'm sorry. Do you have a question?
Can you step to the mic, or one of you, Megan?
I would have to see the invoice. Um, redevelopment has their claims go before their board initially, so they usually don't go before me before coming to you guys. Usually you guys are the last step in that, but, um, I can look at, in the information on the invoice, I can look that up for you and let you know.
I appreciate it.
Okay, no problem.
Is there any other discussion? Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, Clerk Golick, roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali. Vines.
Yes.
Kelwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakels.
Yes.
Warpo.
Yes. Let the record show, claims pass as written, eight in favor, zero opposed, and one absent. Item number six, public hearings, there are none. Item number seven, communications. Does anyone have any communications?
Mr. President.
Councilman Tyler.
I, I just want you a copy of a flyer for street renaming that will be happening this Friday at 10 a.m. to the entire council. Um, sorry, I have to land, I want to send that to the entire council, but we'd love for anyone who's available to join. We're renaming the 1011,000 blocks of Cleveland after River Parish, who's the first black, uh, city council person in the city of Hammond. Once again, that'll be this Friday, uh, 10 a.m. at the corner of River Burris Drive and Cleveland Street. Uh, also want to share that the Sportsplex is hosting an outdoor movie night on September 3rd, uh, so hopefully anybody who's interested will like to attend. If you can break your own chair, you know, have an intention to open, uh, simply a dinner party in the entire, thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any communications? Does anyone else have any communications? Hearing none, communications are now closed. Item number seven. I'm sorry, item number eight, committee reports.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
Uh, yes, I'd like to, uh, report on the capital improvements board meeting that met on August 16th. We approved $44,500 for the design of Alexander Avenue from 167th Street to, um, Marshall, uh, Mar, to Martha. The next meeting will be September 7th. Uh, please note that that is a Tuesday because Monday is the holiday. So Tuesday, September 7th, and the time will be 3:30 p.m. for the, um, work-study session and followed by the, uh, regular meeting. So that is Tuesday, September 7th, 3:30 p.m. here in the council chambers. I also wanted to, uh, make note of the community and crime watch meetings that are coming up. On Wednesday, September 1st, Edison Community Watch will resume their meetings at Edison School, beginning at 6:30 p.m. Hessville Crime Watch will meet Thursday, September 16th, at 6:00 p.m. at the Gene Shepherd Center. Irving Community Watch will resume their meetings on Friday, September 3rd, at Irving School, beginning at 9:15 a.m., and that is a bilingual program. Whiting-Robertsdale Crime Watch will meet Thursday, September 9th. They will be going back to Calumet College. Uh, so that will be at 6:30 p.m. Thursday, September 9th, at Cal College. Uh, South Holman Avenue Neighborhood Watch, uh, will have a meeting in October. A date has not been set yet, but, um, just keep, uh, your ears open for the specifics on that. As usual, if you see anything suspicious, please call 911 because community is not just about me, it's about us. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman Vines. Is there anybody else that has anything on their committee reports? Is there anybody else that has anything on their committee reports? Hearing none, committee reports are now closed. Item number nine, ordinance third and final passage, there are none? Correct? Item number 10, introduction of ordinances.
Item A, ordinance numbered 2128, sponsored by Councilwoman Vines, and ordinance of the common councils of the city of Hammond, Indiana, authorizing the issuance and sale of revenue bonds of the city of Hammond, Indiana, to refund certain outstanding bonds previously issued by the city, together with expenses in connection with the issuance of the bonds.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
I move for first and second reading of 21-08, refer to council as a whole with the meeting on September 13th at 5:15 p.m.
Motion's been made by Councilwoman Vines, seconded by Councilman Spitali. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
Uh, Mayor gave, uh, an excellent synopsis of what, uh, this is, uh, about. It is the refinancing of some bonds that were approved back in 2014. Uh, we will, uh, reduce our rate from 6% to 3.25 and will realize a savings, I didn't mark that down, uh, of over $2 million. Thank you.
Is there anybody else that has any discussion? Is there any other discussion on this issue? Is there any other discussion? Is there any other discussion? Clerk Golick on the motion, please.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kelwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakels.
Yes.
Warpo.
Yes. Let the record show, the motion carries, nine in favor, zero opposed.
President Warpo, that concludes the introduction of ordinances.
Thank you, Clerk Golick. Next item on the agenda is number 10, and it's my resolutions, and it's my understanding there are none. So item number 11, new and unfinished business. Does anyone have anything on the new and unfinished business?
Mr. President.
Mr. President.
Did things change?
Pardon me?
Did things change?
Excuse me, what's that?
Isn't there a second order?
No, that was, no actions being taken.
Oh, okay.
On the resolution or the ordinance.
Okay.
Okay, uh, I heard Councilwoman Alexander and Councilman Tyler, I heard you first, so...
I wanted to give the updated COVID numbers, um, from this, um, from last meeting to this meeting. For 46320, we have an additional 21 cases. For 46327, we have an additional 13 cases. For 46323, we have an additional 21 cases. For 46324, we have an additional 31 cases. And for 46394, an additional 15 cases, um, taking us to 101 new cases. Last meeting, we were at 100 new cases, so we're still seeing that kind of trend growing up because the meeting before that, it was 20, um, cases. So just want people to kind of be careful with that. For vaccines, our numbers are going up and 46320, we have 170 new fully vaccinated residents. For 46327, 151. For 46323, 268. For 46324, 280. And for 46394, 168. Um, looking at an increase of between 1.5 to 1.6% of residents throughout the entire city. For 46394, we are looking just a little bit under 50%, about a 47.8% of residents are vaccinated there. Um, our lowest number is 46327 at 40.4%. So still looking for residents to get vaccinated, research the vaccine, um, especially now that school is back in session, um, if their children can be vaccinated, looking into that as well. But, um, I'll continue to give these updates every meeting so that residents can know where we're climbing. And like I said, from July 26th to now, we have climbed, um, from 20 cases to 101. So we want to be on the lookout for that.
Thank you, Councilwoman Alexander. Councilman Tyler?
Yes, thank you. Uh, I wanted to just give an update about the backdoor giveaway. Uh, given all of the donations we received of items, of course, monetary donations, we were able to purchase, uh, well over 800 book bags, I believe, if I remember, it was like 820. Um, and we, at the event, we distributed about 450 of those, or a little bit closer to 500. So we still have some that we've been dropping off to the schools. Uh, so if anybody in the community needs items, please contact your school and they can let us know. We'll drop off kind of both items at any of the schools. Uh, like, so we have book bags left, crayons, pencils, pens, uh, all kinds of things still left, so just wanted to give that update. Also wanted to thank all the sponsors of the backdoor event. Of course, the Hammond City Council will thank all the council people, uh, who made donations and contributions. I want to also thank Meyer, uh, Family Friends of North First Indiana, First E. B. Lake County, American Legion, Victory Bowl 168, Pudimike, Miss Print, uh, my parents, Darian Loretta five senior, Night Source, Sharice Fordham, Lawrence Taylor, O'Shea Logan, the East Haven Community Council, Joam Moe Holmes, the Hammond Firefighter, Local 506, and of course, the Hammond Sportsplex and the City of Hammond Park. So just want to thank everybody for their contributions to make that event a success. Also wanted to share that we are in the process of, uh, trying to, um, install a new fence along River Burris Drive and Columbia Avenue. Uh, we're just waiting on residents to complete a signed form that they have to submit, so I just wanted to make sure that all the residents that live along that stretch know that in order for us to move forward with that fencing, uh, you have to submit that form and it has to be notarized. And then last, I'm not sure exactly how we need to go about this, but given our conversation earlier about the potential hazardous materials coming from the demolition of Hammond High School, I would like to go on record, uh, I don't know if I need to make a motion or forward request school love or HDM to look into this by doing our own independent testing to see what we find in terms of air samples, ground samples, and then groundwater samples from the old Hammond High Site.
Is that in the form of a motion that a letter be sent? Is that what you said, Councilman Tyler?
Yes. So I would like to make a motion that we send a letter to Ryne Novak and HDM and ask them to do independent sampling of the old Hammond High demolition site.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman Tyler, seconded by Councilman, Councilwoman Alexander. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Uh, Councilman Kowinski.
Thank you. I believe that, uh, what might be in order here as a first step is actually, uh, some of the council meeting with, uh, the department head for the environmental program, uh, to organize what it is we're trying to do and, uh, what are we testing for and, uh, before we just ask for tests being done. Just an, just an idea, just-
Is there any further discussion? Councilwoman, uh, Vanessa?
Uh, yes, I'm in agreement with Councilman Kelwinski. It's kind of like we're in search of a problem. So I, I think, uh, a meeting with, uh, Mr. Novak would be in order before we move forward with that.
Is that-
Mr. President.
Councilman Tyler?
I don't mind meeting with, uh, Mr. Novak, but I think the, the issue at hand is that we don't know, so from my understanding, when you do any environmental testing, you just test random samples to see what elements are, uh, present there. And so by doing that, we'll be able to, one, get a, a sample of the regular ground, maybe around Hammond High, not actually on the Hammond High Site, to see what's present there and what the natural levels of chemicals are, and then compare that to what we find on, uh, the actual Hammond High Site. Or we can take the random sample from anywhere in the city of Hammond, uh, and just say like this is the normal sample size of normal content that we find within our city and compare that to what we found, what we find at the Hammond High Site. From the report that I have that the demolition company has already done, like I said, there are trace elements of barium and asbestos that were found, and so I know those are two things that we are definitely looking for. But when you do sample testing like this, you, you normally know what's already out there, then you test to see what other chemicals are, are found. So I'm still fine with meeting with Mr. Novak, but I think we're kind of thinking about this the wrong way. Instead of us, uh, we're not looking for a problem, we just want to make sure that, that what's in the ground is also in the ground and are any trace, are there are any more kind of major elements there and that we can deal with and find.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Alexander.
Uh, Councilman Tyler, you said that you have communication from someone about barium and asbestos?
Yes.
And who is that from? And who is that from?
So on Friday, I was able to meet with individuals from the School City Hammond, the School City Hammond School Board, Skilman Corporation, and I can't think of the name of the company that was doing the demolition, but they were there too, and they provided us a copy of their report of their findings. And so we do have that, and that's, I'll make a copy of that. It's a, I just have a hard copy, so I'll scan it in and extend it to the entire council. But it does show trace elements of barium and asbestos. And I can't recall a belt that was in like some of the, like there's standing water on that site, so they tested the standing water, they tested some of the ground, and they tested the air samples. And I believe what they found was that some of the standing water on the site was contaminated with, like I said, trace elements, what they're calling very small elements of barium and asbestos. So I just want to, once again, go on record saying that like, I'm not saying that their record is false, but as a city, we have the responsibility to make sure that it's not false. And I think this is just what I'm asking for.
And Mr. Novak is aware of this report you have?
I'm not sure, to be honest. It sounded like no. I was told, I was told it was here, but I'm not sure if that's true. So what I did is scan it, and I will submit a copy to the mayor's office, to everyone in the city council, and to Mr. Novak. And I can do that tonight.
Mr. Chairman. I believe that's a good first step. I don't think we take action on this until Novak reviews and weighs in on whether trace elements of this or that or the other are things to be concerned about, or whether they're just trace elements that are below any kind of level of concern. So I think we need to go to the expert before we just ask for him to do a test. I think he needs to see the study. I think he needs to let us know what that study means and whether, in his professional opinion, we need to go further on that. I think that's a courtesy you have to extend to the man who's head of the department.
Mr. President.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Alexander, I heard first. Sorry, Councilman Tyler.
I think that it would be appropriate to, even with the report, send a letter stating something that we might want to have done, even if he decides, okay, X, Y, and Z. But to send a letter as a council saying we support a study, I don't see anything wrong with that, but giving the report that will happen because they had a meeting over there, and that report was provided to those that attended that meeting. So since he wasn't, maybe he wasn't invited, I have no clue, but to say, hey, these things were found in this letter, this is what's going on, we're taking, we're taking our responsibility as council saying, here's a letter from us saying, if you can, after you read this report, can we do an individual study?
Is there any further discussion?
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilman Tyler?
Actually, so from my perspective, I think that the report that we already have is somewhat irrelevant. And the reason I say that is because I think we as a city should do our own independent testing, no matter what they found or not. And then given what we find, Mr. Novak can then come back and say, yes, we should be worried about this, or no, we should not be worried about this. Once again, I'm not trying to discredit the report or the study that was submitted to us, but what I am saying is that as a city, we don't always take somebody else's judgment or somebody else's, I guess, like findings for word, we do our own investigation. And that's all I'm asking. It would be the same thing as like code enforcement, going in and studying the building, or studying an apartment for rent or something like that. Like, we go in, we don't just take the landlord's word that this place is on the open end. We do our own study to make sure that that is right, because that's our responsibility to our citizens and to our residents. So despite what we have in this report already, I say that we do our own study and then let Mr. Novak report out on what he finds to say if our residents should be concerned or not, based off what we get back from our own independent testing.
Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion, being in the chair, I can't comment on this issue? So Clerk Golick, roll call on the motion to send a letter to Mr. Novak.
That wasn't the motion.
Is that, what was the motion?
I thought it was to send it to IDEM.
Councilman Tyler, clarify your motion, please.
No, the motion was to send it to HSTEM, so it will be running next.
So the motion has been made to send a letter to the Hammond Department of Environmental Management to do testing. Clerk Golick, roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
No.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakels.
Yes.
Warple.
No, let the record show, seven in favor, two opposed. Does anybody else have anything on the new and unfinished business? Does anybody else have anything on the new and unfinished business?
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
Yes, I would like to compliment Councilman Tyler and thank him for taking the lead on the school supply giveaway that was sponsored by the Hammond City Council in collaboration with several other organizations. It was a monumental task. A lot of kids and families, for that matter, left there happy and excited to be starting school. So I just wanted to thank Councilman Tyler and the councilman who showed up to pass out the items to our residents. So thank you, thank you very much.
Does anybody else have anything on the new and unfinished business? Does anybody else have anything on the new and unfinished business? Hearing none, new and unfinished business is closed. Item number, is that 12?
13.
13. Public expression. The first person on our list is Carlotta Blake King.
I just simply would like to thank Councilwoman Berry and the council for your, I understand the vote was 7-2 to move forward with the testing, is that correct? Did I hear it correct?
Excuse me, Ms. King, can you speak up a bit?
Ma'am.
Can you speak up a bit?
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Carlotta Blake King, 1004 Highland Street, Hammond, Indiana. Again, I would just like to thank Councilwoman Berry and each and all of you all for your vote of confidence moving forward with the additional testing regarding the asbestos for Hammond High School. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, signed up, is Ken Bastasic.
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 Hello, everyone.
Can you state your name and address, please, for the record?
Ken Bastasic, I live at 6922 Marshall Avenue. I lived in my house for 30 years now, I grew up in Hessville. We're talking about ordinances and laws and everything. Of course, we know if they're not enforced, what are we doing here? And the mayor brought up, you know, we're talking about the toxic waste and so-so. I brought up in a crime watch meeting back early summer about all the dump truck traffic going up and down Kennedy Avenue. Now, I was told that's supposed to be just local delivery. These are open dump trucks barreling down Kennedy Avenue, coming off the expressway. I even fouled them. They're going to 5135 Kennedy Avenue in East Chicago, right next to the old DuPont plant. It's a transit company. They're using that as a thoroughfare. Now, we have Indianapolis Boulevard, we have Klein Avenue, what are they doing there? Barreling down, and again, there's stuff in there, who knows what's coming out of it? You could hear them just barreling down, they're in the left lane, like, get out of the way. I contacted the police, they said they'll look into it. Again, you know, we have ordinances, local deliveries, they're not local, they're tearing up the roads, and then next year, supposedly, they're going to fix Kennedy Avenue in Hessville section. For what? Be torn up? It's a straight thoroughfare coming off the expressway going right into East Chicago. Why can't they go down the boulevard, Route 20 and back? Because it's easy. Nothing's being done. Like you said, every five minutes, you see trucks coming, coming and going, coming and going. This is summer, and nothing's being done about it.
Did public expression is for the public? We can't comment. If you want to stick around after the meeting, being from my district, I can talk to you more about the issue.
Okay. It's just aggravating. Like I said, you could be in the left lane, here comes a couple, get out of the way, you know, it's just barreling down, and they go all the way to East Chicago. So it's not local traffic. I mean, you even see semi carrying coils barreling down Kennedy Avenue. There is a lot of traffic on Kennedy Avenue. And I live one street off of Kennedy, you could hear them in your backyard, just coming, coming right down the road. And now, the other question I have, the topic, is that, you know, the city spent millions of dollars for Hessville Park, it's a beautiful park, you know, I used to go swimming there and ride the bike, everything, when I was a kid. And I've called at least maybe five or six times to the police department because of the shelters that they have there, especially the one facing Kennedy Avenue. They have the walking path, no motorized vehicles allowed, and there's always cars parked at the shelter for get-togethers. So I understand they have permits, but they're parking there, they're tearing up the roads. I called 911, non-emergency, here comes the cop, get out of there. I talked to Superintendent Wick, he says bring this up to the meeting, you know, as a resident. It's like, one day we were there, and we couldn't even walk because there's cars parked there. Now, am I supposed to get into it with the person? Hey, what are you doing there? You know, it's a city park. In fact, I just called Saturday about 5:00 o'clock, three big cars sitting there. And the next day, balloons, garbage all over. Now, I was told also they're supposed to make a barbecue pit because they're barbecuing under the shelter, that's wood. People just don't care. Like I said, you know, it's the way society is, you know, like, hell, hell with you. I mean, most people obey the law, other people, who cares? They ignore the signs, there's no parking, no motorized vehicle, it's not a road, it's a walking path.
Okay. Thank you. You're allowed three minutes, and it's already past the three. I'm sure that I'll address you after the meeting.
Okay.
Just the question I have, you're talking about them parking on the walking path, correct?
Yeah.
To get to that shelter there, right off of Kennedy Avenue?
Yeah. And they have another one that's over by the ice, the water park on that site, but it's always a shelter.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Other than Rob Bunner, who's already waved it off that he doesn't want to speak, nobody else has signed the list, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Motion's been made by Councilwoman Alexander, seconded by Councilman.
The office will sign.
Okay, then go ahead, no, go ahead, go ahead.
I'm just teasing, you're putting the jury in.
Okay. Got me jumpy. Motion's been made by Councilwoman Alexander, seconded by Councilman Spitali. Clerk Golick, roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakels.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes. Let the record show, nine in favor, zero opposed, the meeting is adjourned.